Just as soon as we have a Board of Education quorum. And now we have a quorum, we are good to go. I'd like to convene this meeting of the Watertown Board of Education, special meeting. The date is February 9th, 2021, and I ask that we all please rise as Mr. McCoskey leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, love.
Thank you, Mr. McCoskey. Mrs. Davidson?
Ms. Hosking?
Yes.
Mr. McCoskey?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty? Ms. Rinaldi? Ms. Wilk? Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman? Mr. Malaguti?
Here.
Thank you.
Mindy?
Yes.
You can call for Janelle Wilk again?
Janelle?
We see her, but I don't hear her. So she is here. And in addition, Mr. Flaherty will be joining us momentarily.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Villanueva for her superintendent's proposed budget presentation. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'm hoping that I can scroll the slides well this evening, but I thank you for working with me through that. Hello, members of the Board of Education, administrators, faculty, students, and Watertown community members. Tonight, I will be presenting the Watertown Public Schools Superintendent's Proposed 2021-2022 Budget. And here we go. To begin, I'd like to thank all of our administrators for working with me these last two and a half weeks in answering questions, preparing items for me, and really taking me through the historical piece, which I am still learning about Watertown now. So thank you to everyone who's on that slide there. At this time, we have the following budget specific events coming up. On February 22nd, after tonight's meeting, we will have a Board of Education vote on the proposed budget. And on March 1st, that approved BOE budget packet will be due to the town. And on the 16th, the town council meeting will have me present the Board of Education budget at that time. And then on April 5th, a final town budget review session to set the public hearing date will take place. And so there's a little asterisk beside April 21st because depending on what the date is on April 5th, that date may maybe adjusted. And then on May 18th, the town referendum will take place. Sorry. Gosh. We were having a little tech glitch earlier this evening. Okay, here we go. Sorry for that pause. Watertown faculty and students are demonstrating what it means to be adaptable, flexible, and resilient every day. With a pandemic at hand and practices that we've never had to do before, like wearing masks or socially distancing from one another, the Watertown Public Schools community continues to get creative on what teaching and learning looks like today. So no matter what is thrown our way, any good educator knows and students can feel that when they come to school and they feel safe, both socially and emotionally. And when they come to school and they know they're being engaged, their curriculum experiences that are creative and founded in good content. And when they come to school to expand their knowledge and thinking of the community, both immediately around them and in the world around them, we know that we are having a good experience in our schools. The Watertown Public Schools budget is ultimately the very vehicle that allows a district like ours to provide those experiences for our students. And everything that's entailed in creating those opportunities for our students year over year. The Watertown Public School Strategic Improvement Plan is one that offers a very clear path and view of where our district is headed. We know that what we want our students to not only build our knowledge, but the characteristics and skills to give back to their communities and contribute to what continues to become more apparent each day, a wider global society. So you know, I love the picture of the globe with the hat, it says knowledge, characteristics, and skills. It's much more than just the academics. The Watertown Strategic Plan also offers the key nuggets that begin putting the puzzle pieces together. So understanding that a school district and experience for students is one that includes many systems that have to work together. It's no question that this past year has been an extraordinary one. And there have been many moments that we were just constantly changing, doing something new. And sometimes it was quite difficult to find our footing at times. So knowing this, this year's proposed budget really prioritizes and aims to steady our ship, to bring us back to spending time on growing the good work that continues to happen in our schools. It's also a priority in this year's budget to mitigate any potential risks that may crop up this coming year. Acknowledging that COVID is still very real, it is necessary to plan with full awareness moving forward with that in mind. The priorities aim to fortify an already strong foundation and to have it grow even more. The budget process is a collaborative one, and it includes the entire administrative team. And it surely does begin in the fall when the budget timeline is laid out. So prior to my arrival this year, our administrators worked collaboratively to follow a zero-based budgeting process to build a budget that specifically responds to the needs of our students. Included in this process is due diligence in examining historical data and past history while keeping my eye on the greater goal of achieving incremental steps towards our strategic plan's focus areas. Watertown Public School Strategic Plan has three areas of focus. And I love the graphics here. Watertown Cares, Watertown Learns, and Watertown Leads. This year's proposed superintendent's budget includes specific key additions that will help us fulfill the goals of each of these areas. Watertown Cares is ultimately dedicated to the growth and teaching and learning experiences of all of our children. So building a sustainable foundation in academics and social emotional well-being is the guidepost for this focus area. With a tremendous effort to keep small class sizes and the educators who teach them whole, we know we will be able to provide the academic and social emotional needs for our students. Watertown Learns is dedicated to cultivating our students as active participants in their own learning and discovery process. Really, we do this by offering student-centered learning environments that take care of the whole child and every child. So here, dedicating our resources to expanding and supporting things like our Club Den, Rise, and Wings program, and then expanding into the high school. We really are committed to creating the best learning environment for all of our children. And Watertown Leads is committed to building partnerships in our community and to provide a wide range of experiences for our students. So we're going to hear a little bit about how we might be able to increase greater options, but also have a partnership with town. So this year, our, here we go, this year, the proposed total budget is $48,439,863, which gives a total increase of $1,861,273, or total percentage increase of 4% for the fiscal year 22. It is important to note that a school district's largest portion of their budget expenditures are salaries and benefits. For Watertown, for fiscal year 22, our salaries and benefits alone make up 76% of the budget. And that's because it's the people who make up a school district. We are in the business of people, and it is the capital of our faculty and non-certified staff that provide the educational opportunities for our students. The pie chart is always a strong visual for me personally because the colors really show just how small those pie slices can become. So with utilities and maintenance coming in at 3% and 2% of the overall budget and transportation at 4%, which includes our contractual increase for the coming year, it really only leaves 2% for everything else. And everything else means instructional supplies, materials, equipment, in the way of technology, anything else that we want to include in that budget. So you can see that the pies are pretty tight. So let's see what's going in. So with excitement, here's what's going into next year's budget. To further our commitment to Watertown Cares, Watertown Learns, and Watertown Leads, it's really great to see that Watertown has really worked to grow our special education program over the past three to four, maybe five years. And as children grow, so must our programs. So it's exciting to know that students in some of our most intensive special education programs such as Cupden, or Rise, or Wings continue to have success in our district programs. And that next year, we'll be able to expand that programming into the high school. And that programming will be outfitted with a full-time social worker and two special education teachers. In addition, what we get with that as well is that with the expansion of the program into the high school, we have a very high possibility of having students return from out-of-district placements back to our district. And this is a wonderful opportunity to ultimately welcome back our students into the Watertown community, their hometown, and have them join their home schools. So in addition, with the expansion of the program, it really does offset the increasing costs of outplacement tuition. Next, for Watertown Learns, and if you watched last night's, well, you were there, last night's BOE meeting about the program of studies, we discussed the new course offerings and more trade-oriented electives being offered at Watertown High School. Courses like Foods, Math for the Trades, or AP Seminar, they're in high demand by our students. So similarly, tech ed courses where students can dive into manufacturing, technology, coding, engineering, so many more opportunities really does expand student experiences to include those trades. So with that, I've also included in next year's budget Point 5 of a tech teacher for our high school. And I think that program will grow, and so that's a good starting point. Lastly, for Watertown Leads, this is how we connect to our people, not just the people in our district, but also out of our district. So working with the town of Watertown is an important part of building a strong relationship with our larger community. In addition, we have actually been without an HR, a human resources specialist, or a director for some time. So in talking with the town, this is an area where we have the possibility to collaborate, to fill a human resources position together. And the school district would request a .75 FTE, so .75 a person, and the town would assume the remainder of that position. But ultimately, to work hand in hand in supporting the needs of the district and our community. And what's interesting about that position is that currently, because we are without somebody in-house, we are outsourcing for HR consultancy work. And so when we offset the cost of what we're paying for the consultancy and the cost of a .75 FTE member, really, it comes in at a dollar amount that can be sustained. So these items specifically are the ones going into next year's budget to help drive our district strategic plan forward. Now, at the same time, if you remember the pie chart that we just looked at, there was a gray portion, and that was for special education. Our special education costs are our third largest expenditure in our school district. And it's important to note that special education costs have increased drastically. And it's my strong belief and commitment to build a strong educational experience for all of our students. And so to provide just a little bit of context around that, I share that in just one year, special education costs, which may include tuition, both in district and out-of-district, professional technical services, which comes by the way of related services like OT, PT, behavior therapists, and special education transportation, increased by 3% on its own, or a dollar amount of $1,808,204, to total a round number of $6,567,000, $567,074 for FY '22. And at the same time, federal and state special education funding still really only covers a portion of these growing costs. So this is where the budget priority of steadying the ship is really important. And so I've appropriately built in funds to build a strong foundation for our special education programs next year. In addition, enrollment and class sizes are data that we watch very closely. We know that smaller class sizes benefit children and educators alike. And so knowing this, monitoring class sizes before and once schools open in the fall is an important practice that we will continue to do. And if there are any budget implications to that, we make those decisions as we get closer to that time. For the fiscal year of '22, Watertown Public Schools are awarded various streams of federal funding. Some of these numbers are still estimates based on just historical data because they haven't released next year's actual numbers. But these federal funds, we have to remember, cannot actually be used for any general operating budget items. So we can't say, for instance, pay for benefits out of these lines. Each of these grants have very specific parameters on how we can utilize them to further the learning opportunities for our students. But you'll see the IDEA grant, Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4, Carl Perkins up at the high school. We had a little bit of funding for bilingual education. And SR2 is a specific to coronavirus relief. And so that is very specific to help support students who may have had some learning loss this year due to COVID. Similarly, we do receive state funds. In terms of state funding, we received two main grants, one called the Education Cost Sharing Grant and the Excess Cost Grant, which is directly tied to our special education expenditures. These grants help offset the costs for special education, but as you remember, the gray piece of the pie, the 13%, certainly does not offset nearly the full amount. So with focusing our resources to make sure that we are continually growing our programming and providing our students with what they need, I diligently looked at all the areas ultimately to see where we could realize savings, where we could essentially become more efficient, or we could reduce in order to see our priorities through. So on this next slide, you'll see that several lines are included in this in order to see where we are aiming for next year. I also strongly believe in coming at a budget with a fine, precise scalpel when we're doing this exercise as opposed to a sledgehammer that would be detrimental to our students' experience. So just a little bit of explanations on some of the areas where we are realizing savings, or we are becoming more efficient, or it is just a reduction. The first, you'll see that for non-certified staff, it says that there's a reduction of eight paraprofessionals. In last year's budget, it was built in that six paraprofessionals would also be reduced. With natural attrition, we did actually have movement in that bargaining unit. And once COVID hit, we actually kept the six positions on the books because we needed extra personnel to help with the cohorting as well as just students in our buildings. So this year, although it says eight, it's really an additional two paras that would be reduced. And again, this is a bargaining unit where we do have quite a bit of turnover and movement. And so by natural attrition, there is a high possibility that people on that list of reductions are recalled back into the district. And we do that process right up until school begins, when those positions become available. In addition, at the moment, we have one open custodial vacancy, and I'm going to leave that unfilled for now and to capture $55,000. Overall, we are doing some small slicing and dicing in a number of lines in terms of substitutes, some interns. We are receiving some savings in the solar panels, which is great because that's something that I know is a big project that we put in, so we're realizing savings there. In addition, we do have the capital improvement that's going to be happening, and one of our HVAC projects will be added into that. Although we have many, many HVAC units, there is the possibility, the potential savings there. I am keeping my eye very close on that one because, as you know, it is our job not only to transport our children back from school, but also to keep them warm in the winter, cool in the summer. And so if anything happens maintenance-wise, we are definitely going to move forward and get it fixed or done if something breaks down. So that number is a little squishy. In addition, there were some areas that we were able to just make some good decisions. Seeing as COVID has really reduced the amount of travel, we were able to capture some savings in traveling for professional development. A lot of things are virtual now. Also, for dues and fees, we were able to, you know, take a look at exactly what fees that we're paying for that we could offset for just a year or so. And also to that as well, our school buildings, our administrators really did a good job of looking with a fine tooth and comb of trying to find savings here and there. I know they didn't want to, but I asked them to, and they certainly did. And so we were able to capture across all five of our buildings about $44,000. So with all of that, this is how we were able to capture about $815,000 worth of savings. It wasn't an easy task. It keeps it tight and straight to the bone, but it does help offset some of the costs that we would incur because we are keeping our eye on those priorities to grow our programming in the district. Okay, so once again, the total proposed budget for FY '22 is $48,439,863 for an increase of $1,861,273, or an overall total of 4%. In addition, just to finish out, I thought it would be important to just to take a look at the last six years' worth of budget history. And so these are all approved Board of Education budget amounts after the town referendum. So these are not actual expenditures, but what we were approved for. So you can see that we've had our little ebb and flow, dips and valleys, dips, peaks, and valleys. And so this year, coming in at 4% is where I think we can have the best educational program for our school district. So I will pause there, and if there are any questions, I turn it over to you. I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I just want to start off by thanking you for a very transparent and precise budget presentation thus far. It's really great to see you clearly have a very strong depth of knowledge in a very short period of time that you've been here in the district. Quick question on the state funds and the federal funds. Although not as much as we need, a big chunk of money that we do receive, or the town does receive in reimbursement. Could you just explain when those funds affect our budget? In other words, are any of those funds built into this budget already, or is it minus $11,757,000, for example, in ECS after the 4%?
Sure. So the one that is built into this budget and already reduced to get to the $48 million total number is the Excess Cost Grant. And that's still an estimate at this point, and that's based on our special education funding. The Education Cost Sharing, I did not bake that in. That goes straight to the town. And so that is typically when the town is ready to provide us our appropriation, they'll get that number. So that is also an estimate at this point. So that one is not baked into the total number.
So technically, we are $11.7 million less in spending than what we're showing dollar-wise in this presentation once the town receives that money back.
It's it is, yes, we can say it that way, but it gets very tricky if I take it out from the number at this point because to the town, yes.
Yep, understood. Okay, any board members have any questions on any part of this?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. McCoskey.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Dr. Villanueva. As Ms. Carradi stated, you know, very clear, concise, and your depth of knowledge in such a short period of time is quite remarkable to say, at least with everything else going on. So my first question is, you know, is really a 30,000-foot looking down. We know the number one priority is our kids. In this budget, do our teachers have what they need? Books, resources, et cetera, to serve their classrooms, to serve our children?
The answer in short is yes. There are always going to be areas where we look for efficiencies, but always areas that we were always going to resource because that's why we're here. We're in the business of serving our children, and we will, of course, always do that. What offered us the ability to make some efficiency kind of looks this year was we are in the midst of some transitions for some of our programs. And so as we continue to look, or as we continue to crystallize exactly what program we're going to land on, it allows us a little bit of wiggle room here and there. But it doesn't mean that our kids aren't going to have math books next year. It means that as we're in transition, we might be able to just pause on some of the larger spending that we planned on doing.
Got it. Thank you. So a second question. So I want to go to your slide that referenced the District Improvement Plan connections where you introduced the addition of one FTE social worker, two FTE sped teachers. And you talked about potential savings. How confident are you in those savings? You know, I always, you know, kind of cringe a little bit when I hear potential and budget because if we don't hit it, that means we're running a deficit. So I was hoping you could respond to that.
Right. So I think with the high school program picking up so that our in-district students graduate from eighth grade and move up into the high school, the word potential savings really came from bringing our students back from outplacement. We have a number of students who are out there, and I'm working with our Director of Special Education. My question to her was, how many students do you think might be able to return back to their home district now that we have, once we have this program back in? She gave me, like every good sped director would, a range of students instead of an actual amount. So with that, the potential being it could increase, it could decrease from there slightly, but we do have a pretty firm thinking of students who will be returning if the program is up and running.
Great, thank you. And to piggyback on that, you know, as I believe you stated earlier, as well as I think in our meeting last night, you know, the special education continues to be a challenge in the sense that the needs are growing, the number of students are growing. Can you talk a little bit about what assumptions you've taken into what that might look like in this budget and how you've prepared to accept, you know, those new students or additional services?
So I've actually been extremely conservative in taking assumptions around special education for this coming year's budget. I've taken some assumptions and risks around potentially, you know, numbers might wiggle around. Let's see, like health insurance or something like that, or dental insurance, or workers' compensation, but we've baked in well. For special education, I went very conservative to appropriately fund, to get as close to appropriately funding our special education needs for next year. And that's why you're seeing such a large increase in ask for that following year. I did that because the more appropriately we fund the foundation now, the next year, if there is anything that's unanticipated or spikes, we already have a firm foundation, and anything unanticipated is just that. When we have less footing in that firm foundation, then not only do we have something unanticipated, but we also have a little bit of a hole we have to dig out of. So that's where you see the more conservative and larger number for funding next year in special education.
Great, thank you.
If I may, Dr. Villanueva, on the savings for students returning back to their hometown, I know you put in $280,000 in savings. I'm assuming that comes from both transporting the students out of district and the tuition for those outplacements. Is that correct?
Actually, great question. It only includes tuition. So there would be potential additional transportation as well included in that if we brought our students back home.
Okay, great. And you still anticipate that it's going to cost us much less to do it here for those higher-need students than it would be in the current places that they're in?
100%. So with just the number of students who are moving from eighth grade up into the high school, the number of students who would need an outplacement because we couldn't offer them something in-house would be more than $500,000. And so with just the growth of the program at two, I can't see the slide in front of me, but I think it's 240,000. That's less than half of what it would cost if we had to outplay those students.
That's fantastic. Okay, if we could just talk about the reductions in savings page for a moment. If we go down to the custodial, the $55,000, I know I know that that area, we've had to take in substitutes and overtime related to COVID nineteen mitigation strategies. How do we move next year into still having mitigation strategies impact the custodial, you know, daily checklist, so to speak, and keep them down a custodian? How is that going to impact our buildings?
At this time, we would, we're working with a temp firm basically to have temp custodians come in, and they are part-time temps, so we don't incur the cost of benefits for them. There is one possibility that we continue to use that temp firm, and you take on a few more people, but then you don't have that additional benefits cost. So there is a possibility to do that.
So we would only do that for COVID-related work, correct?
Correct, correct, exactly. So at this point in time, not knowing just how much COVID-related work will continue on next year, this is a possibility to leave that position open. We've also had that open for a little while now.
Okay, thank you. On the contracted services repairs, the potential savings of ninety thousand dollars. So just for point of clarification, I believe that that capital improvement project that we've built into what we're going to request to bond from the town or however they see fit to fund it, was about a seventy-five thousand dollar cost. Is that correct?
Um, so it was a seventy-five thousand dollar cost, yes, to put the HVACs in. This is a line, and I'm glad that you brought it up. This is a line where I am assuming some risk here.
Okay.
We do have quite a number of HVAC systems. So even though we're having one or two repaired on the John Trumble roof through the capital improvement, there are still a lot of HVACs out there. So again, if something goes down in maintenance or facilities, the answer is I'm going to get it fixed, because our kids need to be in safe buildings that are up and running. So that ninety thousand is, is, it's a bit of a deep cut there, but I think I'm a bit willing to take that risk at this time.
Okay, understood. And on the professional development and travel, you know, I know there's only a five thousand dollar savings, but it's still five thousand dollars, and we've got to find the savings wherever we can. So I appreciate that. Do you think once COVID is over, so to speak, in terms of those types of professional development seminars that we might be sending staff members to, will start to go non-virtual at some point? Or do you think they've learned that this can be done in a much more efficient manner, and they'll continue to stay virtual?
I think there are certain types of PD that virtual is just fine, where we can get on, and there can be seventy-five to a hundred people or just a group of twenty, and that's fine. But I think there's also other PD. So for instance, if I could give an example, our special education teachers or our administrators may be getting something like PMT training, which would allow us to safely hold our students when they are in at risk. That is a PD that we have to go offsite no matter what, or we invite somebody to come in, and they would have to travel between buildings. So in that respect, that might be a PD that we would have to go out for.
Okay. And then one last question on that list is on the equipment line. I know that our technology infrastructure has a lot of work that needs to be done and in building that infrastructure. And I see that you've worked that into the ESR, ESSER grant. I think that's phenomenal. Could you just speak a little bit about that and the implications of putting that in our own budget, or, you know, would we even be able to afford to do that? If you could just speak a little bit about that.
Absolutely. So one, I'll start with the ESSER grant. It's so very specific in what can actually be included in it. As I mentioned, the parameters around loss of student learning is a big part of it, but it was very much geared towards technology. And so it made sense, knowing that our technology number was about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that we could absorb it in there. The dangers of moving anything out of an operating or general fund into a grant is that if the grant disappears and the SR two will disappear, it's only for next year, is that you then have to either move it back into your operating or find another grant to cover the whole amount. What can happen, however, though, because I can move the whole amount into SR this year, is to get a good amount of that work done through the grant next year, and then perhaps phase in a half portion, a three-quarter portion over the next few years after that, so that we're not just taking the whole amount back in. But that is a risk that that happens when we move anything into a grant.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Dr. Villanueva, thank you very much for this. I'm looking at the breakout where you have the two pie charts where you went into the special education funding. It's early on, and I guess I'm just asking, for our next meeting, you talk about the federal and the state grant that we receive. And I'm wondering if it might be helpful for us to look at some trend lines on those, perhaps over the last five or six years. I think you used six years when you talk about the board adopted budgets toward the end. So I mean, it doesn't need to go back to the beginning of time. But I think it would be helpful to show us and for the people on the council and the people who are living in our town and working and depending on the school system, just to kind of see where those monies are going and how, particularly in federal, I think it's not as large as what we get from the state, if memory serves, but kind of knowing where they've been going, because I think that might help build some context into our next steps on the budget.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to provide those numbers, just as a precursor to that information that will be on the way. Typically, over the last six years, we've been trending between the high sixties to, you know, the low seventies in terms of what reimbursement we receive for excess cost. This year, because our numbers in special education were much higher, because the reimbursement is ultimately, you know, parallel to what we spend, we, we did receive, I think in the low eighties, a percentage of reimbursement in excess cost. So that was a wonderful jump, but again, not, not enough of a jump, but a jump.
Okay. So does that mean then that if we were making, if we had savings then in special education, that number would go down because is it a, even though it's a percentage, does it float and rise based on what we spend?
That's right, exactly. So the way the excess cost works, it is we take our base per pupil cost, and we times that by four point five. I mean, I'd be happy to do this in our next meeting. And anything that we spend beyond that number, and I think our threshold this year was seventy-five thousand nine hundred or so dollars. So for any special education child that we spent more than seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars or so, those excess costs would ultimately be reimbursed to us. And again, we were, we were running between that high sixties to low seventies for a while. But this year, about that low eighties percentage we received of that excess cost beyond the seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars. But I'm happy to get more firm numbers for our next meeting to show that sixth year history on that.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, through you, just one more question. The collaboration on the HR position caught my attention as well. And I'm wondering if you think there will be more opportunities between the school system and the, and the town to, to share the burden of different expenses along the way. I realize you just got there, but and perhaps that's something that starts getting evaluated after for the next budget. But have you identified or spoken yet with the town or your own business staff and experts about potential other areas to collaborate?
I have. Well, we're, well, we're one step closer because we're at least in the same building, so that's a good thing. But yes, I've already reached out to our town partners, spoken with their Director of Finance or their finance manager, as well as the town manager. And they're very open and want to move forward with the shared HR position. I haven't broached any other potential positions that we would be in partnership with, but, you know, things like the Capital Improvement Plan will start to work together on how to move that forward. So as I remain here and continue to move the work forward in the district, there are folks that are just a hallway and a staircase away from me. So, you know, it's not a bad idea for me to pop up every once in a while and poke my head in, which I've already started to do. So I do hope that there will be some more future opportunities for that.
That's great. Thank you very much, Dr. Villanueva. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clarity. Any other board members have any questions or comments related to the budget presentation? Well, that is a good sign of a thorough presentation for those of us who tend to ask a lot of questions. Over the next two weeks, the board members will have time to go through all of the documentation and the line item materials that's been supplied to us and to consider any further questions or concerns that they might have. And then leading up to that next board meeting where we would hope to vote to either adopt or suggest changes to on the budget. Board members comfortable with the amount of material and information that you have thus far to make that determination over the next two weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
At this point, I don't have anything else to add, other than the last three or four slides on the presentation are just the line items. So I'm on the thank you slide at the moment, but if anybody in the public or whoever is interested, there are just three additional slides for, for those line items.
Would you like to go through them now, or do you want to just?
No, we've actually gone through them. So if anything, I'll just give you a peek at what it looks like. It's, there we go. It just, it just looks a little bit more like an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. And will this proposed budget be available on the district website?
That's exactly right. So we'll have that posted. Definitely the latest tomorrow morning.
Wonderful. Okay, with that, I would just ask one more time, do board members have any questions or comments related to the presentation? Okay, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? The time is seven twelve. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Doc.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.